Okay, good. We'd like to welcome this enormous crowd to regular meeting of the board's selectmen for Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018. Please rise, join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
I'm gonna make a motion before we go any farther that we -- I'll move -- I'm gonna make two motions. The first one will be to move old business to the first item on the agenda following approval of minutes, so that John can get back upstairs to the public site building committee, to their second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then I'm gonna make a motion that we add to the agenda under the first item under new business, consideration of appointment of special counsel involving Duracell, to make that an executive session.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, and we'll move that to the last.
To the last.
All right. So first item is approval of minutes of Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. Here's a motion to approve.
I don't move.
That's secondly. Any changes? Any comments?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And carries. Next would be public hearing minutes from September 18th, seven o'clock that night. I'll make a motion to approve.
You weren't there.
What's that?
For the special meeting?
Yeah.
Can you make that motion? You weren't there.
No, for the public hearing.
Sure, the public hearing.
Oh, all right. All right, I'm sorry. Was it three then?
Seven. Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And carries. And then finally, special meeting of September 25th, 4:30 in the afternoon, and I can't make that motion.
I'll make the motion, it will be approved, that's submitted.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstained, was not present. Let's see, so we didn't put first electmen's report on the agenda, but I'll just cover a couple items. The Beach Street sidewalks are about eighty percent complete. One snag in that is that the -- there's a culvert where the creek goes underneath, and we're familiar with that because the Public Utilities Commission had to put a wireline under there. Well, when they exposed -- when they took off the sidewalk to expose that, to redo the sidewalk, they found that the steel I-beam that holds up the sidewalk has about two inches missing. So it's rotted completely through in the center of the beam, so there's the I part, the I at the bottom, and then the vertical part is completely open, you can put your hammer through it. So there will be a slight delay of about a week before they can finish that, they can complete that, because that I-beam is gonna have to be replaced. It's gonna be about another four or five thousand to that job, and there should be enough grant money to cover that, so it wouldn't be a problem. In case anybody asks why it's taking a little bit longer, that's what the reason is. And that's all I had to report tonight. Row program is underway, paving Dittmar. They will -- they do have enough funding to pave the -- all of Wolfpits, because it looks like they were gonna -- they were gonna mill and fill the top part of Wolfpits and then just do some patching on the bottom part, but it looks like they will have enough to do everything, so that'll get a real headache out of the work.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the other selectmen? Hearing none, then we'll go right to the old business update from public site and building. I'd like to welcome John Menti, Chair. Thank you. Thank you for being here, John.
All right, just a couple updates. Currently, as of today, the contingency balance is fluctuating between $115,000 to $120,000. And the reason why I say it's fluctuated, because we've had some things that, for example, the special testing of the materials, which has been completed, that was a $50,000 budget item, I believe, and I don't have the exact number. That's about $2,000 or $3,000 left in that account that we won't use, so that will go back. Some of the IT money, telephone, that came under budget. Again, a few more thousand dollars have to be put back into the budget. So when I say fluctuating, it's in that area of $115,000 to $120,000. Hopefully by November, we'll have a final counting of the actual expenditures and what is actually left. I'm gonna be meeting with Bob Kowalski on that probably towards the end of October, so we can start getting those numbers to you guys. Second thing, last week, last Wednesday, Eversource did a site walkthrough, because we applied for that rebate grant. Apparently, they liked everything they saw, and if we meet all the requirements, which we believe we did, they did not indicate there was anything missing, we're gonna be getting back about $15,000 to $53,000 back from Eversource, that will obviously go back to the town as far as the rebate money goes. And again, that could fluctuate a few, but I think it's between $50,000 to $53,000. I don't remember what the exact offer was, but it's in that range.
That's a -- that's an energy rebate?
Yes, because we -- the heating system, the cooling system, the energy conservation, the insulation of the building, all these requirements were met, and this way, Eversource will give us rebate. Probably the biggest thing that's happening on September -- October 16th is the dispatch center changeover. This is something that's -- it's a pretty big deal. It involves -- it involves state 911 people, it involves the state 911 provider, which is AT&amp;T, it involves Comcast and Frontier, because we have phone lines from both, because we're done it in case one system goes down, it involves a radio company, and it involves the IT people for the building. All have to converge at one time to do this switchover. They estimate the switchover could take four to six hours. So what's gonna happen is, they're gonna be -- all the 911 calls will get routed to Danbury, which is automatically set up in case Bethel's system ever went down, it would go to Danbury. And that's how the system is set up. But they're gonna be routed to Danbury, there'll be two dispatchers at the Danbury PD, one will be one of our certified police officer dispatchers and one middle dispatcher. In the event they get a PD call, they'll be able to call the patrol car via radio from Danbury Dispatch. There will be a dispatcher at one of the firehouses, I'm not sure which one, they both have the capability of -- of the fire departments for ambulance or fire calls, so there'll be a dispatcher there, and they will obviously dispatch from one of the two firehouses. And there'll also be a dispatcher at the station, so when it actually comes online, somebody will be there right away to take calls. So this can -- it could take up to four to six hours, because they actually have to physically shut the system off at the old police station, remove the 911 equipment, bring it up the hill, and plug it in, and wire everything up. It's really a quite a detailed project. I know Captain Pugner has been working with this with Lieutenant Pipatini, I think, to try to get this as smooth as possible, so that is something that they're really deeply involved with. Couple other things, as of right now, we are currently finishing up all the punch list items. The fire marshal, building inspector, and planning and zoning people need to sign off on a few things, and once that's happening, they'll get their CO. And the punch list items, I was there on Friday looking through, I mean, there's some paint, where they painted higher up, the spots got in lower areas, they gotta be touched up. There's a couple sealant tiles, they have some marks that gotta be replaced, things like that are being done. The only construction that's actually being done, not construction, but a changeover, they realized they missed -- they put the wrong lights in the dispatch center, so they're changing that, and they -- we're not paying for it.
We're not what, John?
We're not paying for it, because that was their mistake.
Was that Downs?
No, that was the architect.
The architect, yeah, okay.
And they're putting a different type of light in there, and that he's -- they're eating the cost, and they said that out very from the beginning, that was their mistake.
When is that gonna happen, John?
It's supposed to be done this week. They have the genie lifts, the one-man genie lifts, the smaller ones that go up, so they got delivered last week, last Friday, and the light's supposed to come in today, so we're probably gonna -- it's one day job, it's just a matter of when the lights come in, they can do it. And once the lights come in, they have to put the bulletproof windows in the front. And that's really the only construction on the inside of the building.
I was gonna say, that's the -- the window has not gone in yet, because they're still moving equipment through, though.
Because of the lighting material, something like that. And these are, you know, taking heels up.
Are we paying for the new window?
No.
Okay.
Nope. That was their -- that was their mistake. That was resolved -- that was a -- that was a hot item months and months ago, and it was resolved that they made the mistake, and that's their being paid. The window is in, but they're just waiting off, getting the glass company to install it, until that stuff is moved in, because it's easier to move the stuff through the big opening than walking around. There's still some outside work to be done as far as landscape. If you -- I don't know if you've gone by, most of the fence is taken down, the gate, the fence still crossed in front of Judd Avenue and down along the school, so they're -- after they get the fencing around the tower, which is supposed to be this week, they're gonna remove that other fence.
Yeah, they're working on that today.
Yeah. And yeah, the fence along the back parking lot area, that's all done, it's the tower fence now, because that tower's gotta be secured, obviously, for a lot of reasons, but normally climbing on it mainly. So once that fence is in, then the fence company will take the rest of the fence down, and that's gone. And there's some landscaping that has to be done around the front of the building, and on Judd Avenue where they patched it, there's a strip, two feet wide by 12 feet, that has to be topsoil in there, that's -- and there's some plantings. I know Beth, from planning and zoning, was there today, I did not hear what her results were.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I know she was laying around this afternoon, but she's there for the, obviously, the planting and so forth. And I know with the fire marshal and building inspector, they've been there on a regular basis, testing the systems, make sure everything's working, get the code. And also, last week, most of the in-service training with the police department and the town building maintenance guys happened, there's gonna be another in-service training for the dispatchers on that equipment after the dispatch center's up and running. So that's just about completed too. That's part of the requirements, that the train, everybody, all the HVAC, mechanical systems, how to operate it and send it so forth. But that's the --
Do we have manuals on that?
Yes. And it was also videotaped and manuals.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
This is pretty complex.
Oh, yes.
This is, I think, as bad as a school.
Yeah. It's very complex, because there's so many different things that, you know, because of technology changes as we all know, you know, there's so much more electronics involved than, you know, flipping switches like there used to be. So yeah, that's why they go on through, I believe it was like four days of training between Public Works and the police administration people on that. And there's manuals being provided, and everything was also videotaped, so we'll have that.
Who in Public Works is responsible for that? Is that --
Building maintenance.
Building maintenance, yeah.
It would probably be Greg, because he's the one who has the -- he has a laptop that's specially equipped to run all the energy management systems.
Yeah, I don't know, I know Doug had people go, I don't know, I really don't know who he sent.
He's got, well, Greg and then a backup.
Okay.
So there's a couple people. Dibble, of course, can do it too.
Is the police department moving in that same day, or are they moving before, or are they moving the day after?
They, you know, we've -- I've talked to Captain Pugner and Sergeant Durkin on the committee, and they feel, and I have to agree with them, I mean, they could start, as soon as they get the CO, they could technically move in. But they said they would wanna wait, they'd rather hold off until the punch list is complete.
Yeah.
I mean, they don't wanna be operating a building and have guys, you know, touching up paint and fixing this and fixing that while they're operating. And that's what they're doing now, they're going through the punch list. That's where we stand.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, just landscaping, how much work is there landscaping?
Couple of things, obviously, if you went by, you see where the big sides were all hydro-seated, and this rain is actually gonna help nicely. There's some plantings along the top by Grace Flight's property, where we had, for some reason, the architect landscape had the arborvitaries in the far corner of the parking lot down by Milwaukee Avenue, which nobody would see.
Right.
And wouldn't, because there's a tree line there.
Right.
So we had them move them up along Grace Flight's property. We talked, she kinda asked us, I think you were, you got close with her about that, and we talked to her, and we said that we'd plant them up there, and Ryan Patrick from Downs met with her, showed her where they're gonna go, she was very happy with it, she's thrilled. So we're putting the arborvitaries, it's good blockage.
Right.
That one area between her house and the police station. And along the front of the building, on the two sides, we have to landscape that small area, they have to put some plantings in there, and then hydro-seated along the bank that goes down towards the school, there has to be an erosion mat they put there, and they put grass seed over that, and it rolls up through. And basically, that's just about it.
That will be done this month?
Yeah.
The other question I got from you, John, is where's the sign?
That's which one?
One of those. I guess it was on the road.
Yes. Earth movers is taking care of that. Actually, when I was there this week, I happened to see on, there was an artist rendering of the sign, really identical to what's in the school project, the same stone-type base, the same design. The only thing different, I believe the background is gonna be a light, a blue background that's gonna say about the police headquarters. They're supposed to put that in, like, now. It's all been approved, and then there's a sign that goes out in the front, actually in front of the building, this is Bethel Police Headquarters. If you look at the front of the building, it'll be to the left on that big open, that big long wall. I know that's all been ordered, it's ready for it to come in. The other thing, and I, it's not, it's not part of the project, and I just wanted to mention it, if you look on the open field, Judd Avenue, there's a, along the fence, there is a large tree there that we -- it's a nice tree, but it really needs to be trimmed out a little bit. And I don't know if the town has a, or Public Works, and that's not part of our project, but I think for aesthetics, it would look better if it got cleaned out, we got rid of some of the dead lower branches. Is it Public Works, or you guys got a tree department?
Yeah, well, I'll tell you what, we'll have, send me an email to remind me, we'll have the tree warden take a look at it.
We don't wanna cut it down, we just wanna clean it up.
No, the, we have a contractor, All Seasons Tree Care.
Okay.
Steve Healy's company, and on town property, they will, you know, trim trees that have dead wood on them, so on and so forth. They've done that out here on the front lawn.
Yeah, you know, and also, that's right next to the cross-country path.
Yeah.
And I know the kids walk through there going home, and, you know, you see a lot of branches falling, and the tree's pretty good, but just a lot, there's stuff in the bottoms, just.
Okay, yeah.
Horrible. John, you have another question I've got, is to see, are we just giving them a temporary CO or a permanent CO?
My understanding, they can't, the town doesn't wanna give them, the building prep doesn't wanna give them a temporary CO.
Really?
Yeah.
You know, my concern is, and probably yours concern too, once you give them a CO, trying to get the contractors back, that's gonna be a pain.
Well, actually, the other thing I wanted to bring up, and I, you just reminded me of that, we had a subcommittee that looked at all the change orders.
Yeah.
And they went through it twice, and we had questions of about $113,000 in change orders that we feel we should not be responsible for. And the letter, a registered letter went out to both Downs and to Jomsky Ums on Friday, the 28th.
Okay.
And I believe Matt and Marty were CC'd, I gotta find out where your letters are, because you were CC'd on it.
Okay.
What's probably gonna end up happening, they're obviously gonna wanna meet with us, and I would, my suggestion would be is to meet with a subcommittee, with the town attorney, it's a map, or whoever, to discuss these change orders, and why we feel that we should not be held responsible for. Some were actually miscode items that they had.
Chris Paul?
Right, and that's why we looked to, $113,000, I mean, I don't know what the end result is gonna be, but, you know, we felt that these change orders are not our, should not be our responsibility.
Which is another reason why I'd still go with a temporary CO.
Well, yeah, I don't, Chris Paul went in, I know he's been a very, him and Tom and Beth have been very involved with that, and so they're working on it, yeah.
Well, is it the fact that we sent them a notice?
Well, we wanted also to send them that notice before we had any temporary CO or permanent CO, so it was out.
So it's on the record.
Yes, yeah. And I'd be quite surprised, my phone hasn't burned up today, but I never got a call on it, so. And I'm sure I'll be hearing from them this week, so. And I'm gonna ask you.
Well, if you want the board's selectmen to participate, I mean, I'd be happy.
Well, that's up to you guys, but I definitely think that we, we're gonna probably address that as a, you know.
Sure.
The guys on the subcommittee did the work.
Yeah, your decision.
Right, you know. And, you know, Roy Steiner and a few others who have some serious building experience and background, they were involved, deeply involved with that. Roy was actually, kinda had an, that's subcommittee, so.
Good. So once the 911 cutover occurs on the 16th, and the building is fully operational, are they gonna start the move-in process before that?
Well, once they get the CO, they will.
Oh, okay.
The, they said, they, wait, part of the, they have money, we have money for a moving company to move their big items in, that's gonna happen, that's gonna start on the 17th, that's, obviously, records and evidence has to be moved in by the police officers, they have to, they're gonna rent a van, and physically, because that can't be touched by, you know, not police personnel. And the amount of stuff they're taking out of the old building, you know, very little furniture, because the furniture is horrible there. Some copy machines, are some pieces of furniture they're moving that are coming out, it's only like $10,000 worth of moving, which is not a lot.
Yeah.
A couple guys, a truck, for a good day. So that was all under state bidding, on price, so. But their schedule for them, I think, on the 17th to do that.
Is all the equipment in for the dispatch center? I noticed today that there, none of the monitors are up yet.
Yeah, yeah, we're holding up, putting them up until the, ah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the brackets are all there, just have to actually put the monitors up, screw them in. Throughout the building, where there's smart boards, whiteboards, and monitors throughout the rest of the building, they're all up. The, all the building, the offices are all locked down right now, because they have been done, they have been cleaned by a cleaning company, and they locked the door. So, you know, you can't get in, get into them, they don't, you know. They all have their monitors on, ones that do have monitors and whiteboards, clockboards, they're all up and ready to go.
Okay. Okay, good.
Anything else?
I can't think of anything else. No, like I said, my biggest concern is that CO. I have to vote for a temporary CO, so we're perfectly satisfied.
Yeah, I gotta talk to Chris Paul with some more, because I know he was kind of reluctant to do that, and, you know, there's a lot of balls in the air there, Dublin going on. The other thing, and I don't have a date, I did talk to Chief Finch a little bit about a ribbon cutting ceremony, so I guess he's gonna talk to the police commission and find out. They wanna do it probably sooner than later.
I'm sure. People are trading through.
Yeah.
Have they set up, have you talked to the chief, who's gonna be the company that are in the cleaning this building? This is a bigger, bigger building.
I do know Captain Pugner met with the cleaning company, he brought them up there, because the one that has a contract now with the current police station, so they're going to, I guess, I don't know the details, but they're gonna have to make arrangements to do whatever, because it's.
It's a bigger budget.
Oh, yeah. You're going from, you know, 8,000 square feet to 29,000 square feet.
But I was, one of the things I was really surprised about was hallways with carpeting. That's, to me, it's a police station, not an executive office building.
It's there, you know, I gotta tell you, there is a lot of technology and things in that station that none of us would think about. I mean, for record, for our evidence, and processing, and prisoner processing, it's like, you know, we don't think about it, because it's not our world, which is a good thing.
Exactly.
But it really makes it interesting, it really does.
Well, like I said, John, that's my big concern, is a CO versus a temporary CO. I always know that, once you give them a CO, you know, that building's yours.
Yeah.
And I don't want to revisit it, because we forgot something.
Oh, I, and I know the building committee's doing the punch list walkthrough on Thursday, the police department administration, they're doing theirs, I think, either Wednesday or Thursday morning. I know the architect did a punch list, and he had quite an extensive punch list, so it's being triple punch list.
I know.
And to get, everybody's, you know, a lot of things are being repeated, obviously.
Sure.
But there's little things that you may see, I don't see, and that's what we're looking at right now.
Okay.
All right.
Sure.
I have to go to another meeting.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, we're moving on. Next item on the new business, we're gonna hold the Duracell discussion for the end. Consideration of appointment of special counsel for charter revision. Nicholas Deedy has again agreed to serve as attorney for the charter commission, he's a very good attorney, and he has experience at this, so I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we appoint Nicholas Deedy of the firm Casachi Tushin Santagata as special counsel for charter revision.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is consideration of appointment to the Energy Commission. I'll put a motion on the floor to approve Mr. Jonathan Hartley to the Energy Commission to fill the vacancy left by the resignation of Jill Delorme, and that's a, sort of a balance of a term, and that's a Democrat being replaced by a Democrat, so I'll put that motion on the floor.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna make a motion to add one item that escaped my scrutiny here to the agenda, which is consideration of charter revision item, that you have as a memo, so if you wanna, and then I'll put a motion on the floor that we add that. Just a second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that item is a recommendation to change chapter C6-8, which, when we were doing this a couple of months ago, we, I had forgotten to put that on the list, but basically, this is to address the problem that we have with the utility projects, in that utility projects that have no impact on the town budget, no impact on the general fund, no impact on anything but the rate users, still require sometimes a referendum because of the low limit. And the irony of this is that if we have a referendum on an item that the utilities department must have in order to comply with state health law, and that referendum is defeated for some purpose, the PUC has no choice but to just go ahead and fund it, taking the money directly out of the general fund anyway, because it can't borrow money on its own. So the commission can address this any number of ways, the suggestion I put on there is that they raise the referendum trigger to 3 million for capital utility projects that are funded exclusively through user fees, grants, or loans.
Second.
Okay, so we have that for consideration, what do you think?
Why three? All right, we're really, I want two.
Okay.
Two. Yeah, I just don't want to make it that easy.
Okay.
And because most of our projects are run for two, two hundred years.
All right, well, then I'll restate the motion as 2 million, because that's, I mean, that's progress either way.
Okay. What was the charter revision you were referring to?
C6, C6-8, which is requirements for referendum.
And this is only for PUC?
Yes. The way I stated it is, that my suggestion is, make the, so we restated, raise the referendum trigger point to 2 million for capital utility projects, which, you know, isolates it into PUC area, that are funded exclusively through user fees, or grants, or loans. So, and there may be other complications with that, but I'll let, you know, charter council figure that out.
But you're gonna leave it, town meeting's still required.
Oh, yeah, that would be required anyway.
Matt had a question, when you say capital. Matt had a question when you say capital utility projects. I, I think maybe you should, we should reference the PUC, because a capital utility project could be Public Works.
Okay, all right. Capital utility proj, capital utility projects under the.
Related to.
Under the auspices of the Public Utilities Commission?
Yes.
Right.
Okay. All right, I'm amending the motion again.
I amend my second again.
Okay. Good. Anything else? No else? No? Good. All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll add that to tomorrow night's first meeting with the, with the Charter Commission. Thank you very much. So I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the Duracell issue and enter the executive session at seven thirty-seven, inviting in Deion Craig and Town Attorney Martin Waller.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So as soon as you shut off the recording, we'll discuss. Okay, we are out of executive session at seven forty-six, and I'm going to put a motion on the floor that the town appoint the law firm of Merka Kalina under the lead attorney, team, leading the team of attorney, Kerry Olson, to handle the matter of Duracell property assessment appeals.
Aye.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Hear none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nick Harris. So that completes the agenda.